Good evening and Happy New Year. The January 4th, 2021 Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anarondale County Council is now in session. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Rodman.
Madam Chairman, shall I call the roll first?
Well, maybe. I mean, it is 2021. I thought we might do things differently. No, please do. Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Rodman.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Madam Legislative Counsel, Ms. Schuet.
Here.
And Madam Auditor, Ms. Smith. I believe she is attempting to log on. We'll let you know when she has joined us. All council members are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now, Ms. Rodman kindly gives me an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodman, District 6. As we begin our deliberative meetings in the new year, let us remember the losses of the year behind us. Let us also remember the growth we've experienced. Let us be guided by wisdom and truth and not by rumor and speculation. Let us focus our attention on our potential, but learn the lessons of our shortcomings. Let us renew our commitment to support the Constitution of the United States that begins as follows. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Ms. Rodman. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. "The Maryland Open Meetings Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held at the county seat, meaning Annapolis. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the various executive orders from the governor and county executive letting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written public comments to the legislation filed with a clerk and considered by the council, and now allowing the public to call in or appear via Zoom and testify live. The county Office of Law has appined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public, as required by the OMA. The Office of Law has also reviewed whether, with these technological features in place, it is still necessary to suspend Rules 3105 and 3106 that require public participation and reasonable seating for the public and the media. The conclusion is that it is not necessary to suspend these rules for the same reason that they have concluded that the measures implemented by the councils for virtual meetings satisfy the reasonable accessibility requirement under the OMA. The virtual format of the meeting allows public participation and media access, as required by the rules, and also allows unlimited participation that is not subject to seat capacity limits in the chambers or in the building. For these reasons, they have concluded that the requirements of Rules 3105 and 3106 are being satisfied, and therefore it is not necessary to waive these rules. Council has also asked whether it is necessary to suspend Rules 3102 and 3103, which require the meetings to be held in the county seat. In 2013, at the request of the council, the Office of Law appined that a council member who was appearing at a meeting via live video monitor would satisfy the venue requirement through virtual presence. It is noted that the administrative officer to the council controls the hearing and is present in the Anarondale Center during meetings, and the virtual meeting is hosted by the assisted administrative officer from a location in Annapolis. Those factors support the Office of Law's conclusion that the meetings are being held at the county seat, and therefore it is not necessary to suspend Rules 3102 and 3103."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Take a breath and please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the present agenda received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We've had submissions of written testimony for invitation to audience.
We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have two individuals sign up to speak on matters not listed on our agenda. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. John Jason.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. John Jason, Pasadena, Maryland, District 3. Today, I took the liberty of emailing the council members a proposed resolution for them to hopefully support pertaining to the county executive and his actions during the pandemic. I would like to read into the record the first paragraph, so everybody gets the gist. "Resolution: Supporting the actions of the county executive's office, the Anarondale County Department of Health, the other various county agencies supporting us during this pandemic, and their leaders, management, and staff who serve the communities of Anarondale County, and disapproving the efforts to delegitimize their public health, science-based approach responding to a pandemic crisis. I would like the county council to take this up in support of our county executive, Dr. K., the wonderful people at the Department of Health, and everybody else in county government who has been working so hard to keep us safe through this emergency. In my final few seconds, I would like to also acknowledge the IT staff, the legislative staff, and all the other support staff that help you guys out and make this thing possible. Thank you very much. I yield any remaining time."
Thank you, Mr. Jason. Second, we have Amy Britt, whose name I do not see on the attendee list, but there's one call-in number. Madam Secretary?
No, I do not see her on the attendee list, so she may not be in the meeting. I'm unsure about the phone number, but if Ms. Britt is her number, she should be joining. We'll give her a few more seconds. No, Madam Chair, I do not believe she is in the meeting.
Okay. Then, at this time, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none. I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole.
So moved, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 21st, 2020.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Sarah Lacy at 6:00 PM. Reverend Matthew Hennessy and St. Martin's in the Field Episcopal Church, Sir Frank Park, gave the invocation. Ms. Fiedler led the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2020?
So moved, Allison Pickard, D2.
Second, Councilman Pruski.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of December 21st, 2020 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 121, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Value of Purchases Requiring Full Competitive Procurement Process. Bill Number 221, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Bird Sanctuary. Bill Number 321, An Ordinance Concerning General Provisions Civil Emergencies. Bill Number 421, Emergency Ordinance Concerning Proclamation of Civil Emergency in Anarondale County Termination.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 121, Resolution Approving Continued Service of Ann Bedowski as Acting Personnel Officer. Resolution Number 221, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anarondale County Ethics Commission. Resolution Number 321, Resolution Approving the Appointment of a Severn River Commission Member. Resolution Number 421, Resolution Approving Anarondale County's 2021 Financial Assurance Plan for Compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Phase 1 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 10520.
Bill Number 10520, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, Disabled Veterans and Their Surviving Spouses.
Ms. Hare, Ms. Fiedler, and Mr. Volkey are the sponsors of this bill, and Ms. Hare would like to speak first. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So this bill, like so many good ideas, came from a constituent, a woman in District 7, reached out to me, who had been following some of the enabling legislation going on at the state level. Currently, as you all may be aware, there is a property tax exemption for those disabled vets who are 100% disabled, but there is nothing for a veteran who's, say, 90% disabled. So last session, there was House Bill 257 and Senate Bill 417, each with large bipartisan support. So I think House Bill 257, five cosponsors, and Senate Bill 417 had something like 22 senators sign onto it as cosponsors. And what it did is it created enabling legislation so that counties could allow property tax credits for disabled veterans who were at least 50% disabled, up to that 100% or 99% disabled. So that's exactly what this bill does. It tracks the state language very closely. It gives those veterans who really have served our country and suffered a disability as a result with some credit and incentive to stay here. There are some limitations on it. The full text of the enabling legislation is in the Maryland Property Tax Code at 9-265. And it, so like I said, it limits it to those veterans who are at least 50% disabled. It has to be a service-connected disability. There is a cap on the adjusted gross income. They have to own the dwelling that they're in. And the credit that they get is a partial credit under the enabling legislation. So a veteran who is 75% disabled, between 75 and 100%, gets a 50% property tax credit, and a veteran who is between 50% and 75% disabled gets a 25% property tax credit. So this bill implements it. I think it is a wonderful way to try and recognize some of what these veterans have done for us here, and I hope everyone will support it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Would the administration like to respond?
Soon as I find my mute button. Hi, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me with, from our budget office is Mr. Hussain from finance, Ms. McQuaid, and from law, Ms. Kenny. The administration is very comfortable with the bill, as the sponsor said. It passed with bipartisan support. So it's really a policy choice for this council as to whether or not we implement it here locally. The way our property revenue cap operates, it limits the fiscal impact of 105-20 and spreads the burden across the tax base. So it's not a major fiscal hit, but I do want to flag a few things for the council. We don't know how many individuals will qualify. I think Madam Auditor's blue note suggested that it might be about as high as 3,000. We think that's very possible. All of whom would need to go through a relatively significant verification process. This bill and the state policy that created it do have significant administrative requirements. So there's a lot of paperwork that will need to be done. Much of that paperwork is confidential, so this is going to place a real burden on county finance staff. Our veterans deserve and will expect the county to respond to their applications in a timely manner, have them processed accurately and efficiently. And this amount of work will require additional staff. So I do believe, Madam Auditor's blue note does note that we will be expecting as many as two new staff positions to be included in the next budget if the council supports this. So hopefully, the folks that support this bill will also support the ability for the county to process these appropriately and efficiently. I do want to also point out a little bit of quirk with the way the bill's drafted. This may or may not have been an intentional policy choice of the sponsors, and I'm going to do my best to try to explain this. The bill provides for the surviving spouse to be eligible for the tax credit for an additional five years if the disabled veteran passes away while receiving the credit. So there could be a situation where the credit exists for as long as nine-plus years, up to almost 10 years for one property, while it only would exist for five years for another. To be qualified for the credit, the surviving spouse of the disabled, or excuse me, to be qualified for the credit, the surviving spouse would need the disabled veteran, their significant other, to have been receiving the credit when he or she passed away. So if a disabled veteran passes away, say, four years and 60 days, the surviving spouse would then receive an additional five years under the tax credit, is the way we are reading the bill. However, if the disabled veteran were to pass away anywhere more than five years and one day, the surviving spouse would not qualify for the credit. So it's perfectly okay if that's the intent. We think it does get a little bit quirky, but that's, you know, something the administration just wanted to flag, and I do want to apologize that we, there's been a lot going on. It's the holidays. We didn't catch it until this afternoon. So I do want to flag that for everybody. But as I stated before, this is a deserving population, and it did have bipartisan support in the General Assembly, and the administration is comfortable with the bill with the caveat that we will need additional staff to administer the program. With that, I can answer any questions. I do have our experts from finance and law to answer any difficult questions.
Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, I have a question. Mine will be quick. Sarah Lacy, D1. Mr. Barron, based on what we were just saying about the need for the two full-time equivalents, are you saying that if we pass this bill tonight, that the county executive will include those positions in his budget?
It's going to be, thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. It's going to be looked at holistically in the budget. I think I would expect that we would likely do it.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D2. I just wanted to, in light of that quirky little provision that was just brought to our attention, just wanted to make sure the sponsors understood that and understand that and are comfortable with that going forward. Or was there an interest in changing any language before going forward? I know there aren't any amendments proposed, so I was just curious what the sponsors thought about the quirk.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I was actually going to ask Ms. Schuet, because I believe that we pulled this language to match other similar provisions. And so actually, it was news to me that this is, I see what Mr. Barron is saying about how it's a little bit quirky, but I think this is sort of how we've normally done it. The idea being that if a spouse passes away, the tax credit, you want to give it to the surviving spouse to help them kind of get back on their feet, et cetera, and that is a different situation than if, you know, the credit was had 15 years ago, and when the spouse passes away, they've been paying the full amount. But correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Schuet, that there was something else here.
The language in the bill is, for a surviving spouse, the disabled veteran qualified for or received a tax credit under this section at the time of his death, or her death, or whoever's death. Sorry. And I'm going to have to ask Ms. Kenny, because it's my recollection, Kelly, that you added that to this bill?
Kelly, I need to supervise the county attorney. I don't recall whether I added that specific language or not. I was just looking through the code right now to see what other sections of the law that it appeared in. But I do read it the way that Mr. Barron interpreted it, and I think that sounds to be the intent, that the disabled veteran would have had to have been receiving the credit at the time of his death in order for the surviving spouse to qualify for that. So in other words, if the veteran receives it for five years and then doesn't pass away until 10 years after that, the surviving spouse could not thereafter apply for the credit at that time.
Are there any further questions from the council at this time? Ms. Pickard?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'm a little confused. So what Mr. Barron presented to us was a disabled veteran applies, they are eligible to receive this property tax credit for five years. They have to apply every year. If they pass away, their surviving spouse can then apply for the tax credit the following year and can continue to receive it for an additional five years? Is that the legal interpretation?
Yes.
But a surviving spouse is not eligible for this? They have, that doesn't make sense to me. Okay, so. Okay. I mean, that's a policy decision, I guess. So one property would have the potential of almost 10 years, and another property or property owner who's disabled would only have five.
Madam Chair, I hate to interrupt. I just want to remind everyone, administration, when responding affirmatively or negatively, to please unmute and verbally say yes or no. We can't pick up head and eyes on audio. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Schuet?
Yes, Linda Schuet, Legislative Counsel. I think that most of the credits, I don't think all, but most of the credits that exist in the code run for a total of five years, period. And so there was discussion about whether this should be just a total of five years for the couple, or whether it should be five each. And so I think, and the decision was, it should be five years each. But I think the limiting factor on it is, if the disabled vet gets the credit and then passes away in year four, say, then the other spouse can go ahead and continue that credit for an additional five years. But if the veteran passes away in year seven, it starts, and so the property tax went down while the vet was alive, and then back up, excuse me, and he remains, he or she remains alive, the property tax would go back up during that period. And then if the vet passes away in year eight, it doesn't start all over again for the spouse. They got the five years. I think that was the intention of the drafting process, which we went through with finance and law, and obviously, Councilmember Hare. So that's my take. Thank you.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Yes, what Ms. Schuet said. The idea is, like I said, if the disabled veteran passes away in the middle of the credit, to maintain that, to make sure that the surviving spouse isn't further harmed by this running out, you know, in the middle of the death, and to allow them to have that for five more years, to sort of maintain that status quo for them. That's all.
Any further questions at this time? We will now open a public hearing on Bill Number 10520. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We've had no submissions of written testimony on Bill 105.
And we did not have any members of the public sign up to speak. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill Number 10520 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 10520.
Bill Number 10520, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, Budget: Real Property Taxes, Tax Credits, Disabled Veterans and Their Surviving Spouses.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just wanted to point out, while they did not submit testimony via the portal online, we did all receive email communication from a post commander today in District 7 who shared his support for the bill on behalf of his post in Edgewater.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I recognize myself. Sarah Lacy, D1. Actually, I think it would be helpful to hold the bill for one meeting, given some of the discussion and some confusion that I think different council members may have. There's probably room for an amendment or two to clarify this, and I don't think, you know, tax credit bills are the kind that we want to come back to over and over again to change. We want to get it right the first time so that people know what the program is. So I suppose I will move to hold the bill until the January 19th, 2021 meeting. Is there a second?
I can second it for discussion. I don't, I'm fine to do whatever. I'm comfortable with the bill as is, but also I'm okay if other folks think that there is an amendment they'd like to propose. I am okay with that as well, so I'll second the motion for now.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold? Seeing Ms. Rodman's flag creep in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Rodman, District 6. I really just wanted to, I guess, ask my colleagues if there were any concerns. I may be in the same position with Ms. Hare. You know, I'm comfortable with the bill as it is, but I'm also, you know, curious to hear if there are possible amendments or ideas amendments that might be out there.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 10520 to January 19th, 2021.
Ms. Rodman?
No.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Bill one oh five twenty is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number one oh five twenty.
Ms. Radgian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski? Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Bill number one oh five twenty is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number one oh six twenty.
Bill number one oh six twenty, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Procurement, Transitioning the County's Vehicle Fleet to Hybrid and Zero Emission Vehicles.
The sponsors are Ms. Radgian and myself, so Ms. Radgian, please, um, tell us about the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Radgian, District Six. Um, so I know our attention, obviously, in the last ten months has been focused intently on, um, the global pandemic with COVID nineteen. Um, and obviously, that's an enormously important, um, topic for us to be looking at and addressing on a regular basis. Um, but in the background, I think we have another crisis that also merits, um, examination. And that's the, the crisis with our climate and climate change. You may have, if, if you grew up in a school like I did, um, we were taught, think globally but act locally. Um, obviously, on a county council, there's very little that we can do that could, um, impact, you know, the entire world with respect to climate change. But if we sort of throw our hands up and say, well, there's nothing we can do, um, and every other small, um, government body also throws their hands up and says there's nothing we can do, then we're not likely to make any progress. So I see, I believe this is our opportunity to act locally with respect to climate change. Um, I'm gonna start out by, uh, offering my enormous thanks to, uh, Mr. Johnston, who, um, is responsible for, uh, really crafting what, um, the executive order that ultimately, uh, became this bill. Um, so he really did a lot of the legwork and, and figuring out how to make things work, how to, um, make things feasible, to make it logistically possible. So thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Your enormously, your, your work is, um, enormous here. Um, and let me just take a moment to describe the bill itself. The idea of the bill is that, um, between now, twenty twenty one, I'm still not quite used to saying that, and twenty thirty five, we will go from having a county fleet of vehicles that is currently made up of internal combustion engine vehicles, um, and ultimately end up with a fleet of county vehicles that are either zero emission, um, either electric vehicles or some other sort of zero emission vehicles. Um, right now, um, as you probably all know, just from, you know, looking around at cars available, the most viable, um, alternative for a zero emission vehicle is a plug-in electric. So the bill basically anticipates that's where we're headed, but leave this a little, in case another technology comes along that turns out to be viable and, uh, price appropriate and whatnot. It also doesn't happen overnight. So initially, um, the county would be in the position to purchase both hybrid electric and electric vehicles. Um, because as, as you start to think about this, you realize that the county is going to need some time to develop some infrastructure, um, in order to make, uh, plug-in electric vehicles a viable alternative. We have to, um, have places to plug in and charge the vehicles. So, uh, the county will need some time to make that transition. Um, the bill itself envisions a, I guess now, four-year period in which um, central services would come up with a plan to make that transition, including all of the plan for infrastructure, um, the need for training, um, mechanics who would, you know, who are currently familiar with working on internal combustion engines, but ultimately would need, um, to be familiar with doing maintenance on electric vehicles. So we give, uh, a period of time for central services to create that plan. And then ultimately, um, by the year twenty thirty five, um, we would be only purch, and, and therefore, and, and thereafter, would only be purchasing electric vehicles or whatever technology that's a zero emission vehicle for our county fleet. And, and that's the, that's the vision and the plan for the transition. And obviously, the plan asks for a plan, this bill asks for a plan. Um, it also gives a fair amount of leeway in terms of, um, our financial situation. You know, I think when I first started thinking about this bill, uh, was actually before the pandemic started and our, uh, county finances were very strong. And I hope that they will become very strong again, but I, I know that, um, you know, in, in reality, the county has taken a financial hit, um, meaning the county government, but obviously, all the, the citizens that live here and the businesses that operate here have, have, uh, suffered due to the pandemic. Um, so it gives the county, um, and central services who's in charge of most of the purchasing, it gives them some leeway in terms of, um, financial feasibility. So if we find ourselves in a situation where, um, our budget just simply will not work, um, there is, uh, there is room for, you know, holding off on some things. Um, ultimately, however, this really should be a cost, um, savings measure. The price of lithium batteries, which is what is used for electric vehicles, is coming down. And that actually makes up a huge part of the, um, the total sticker price of an electric vehicle. And, um, a recent report by, um, UBS estimated that by twenty twenty four, they will actually be more affordable than internal combustion engines. So ultimately, once we get past that threshold, we'll save the county money. We will be emitting, um, less, uh, carbon, um, in, carbon dioxide into our, uh, atmosphere. Will be, uh, breathing healthier and hopefully encouraging people in the county to take that same action that benefits all of us. Um, trying to think if I've left anything out. I feel like that's probably a, a, hopefully a good overview and um, I'm happy to answer questions and thank, uh, Chairwoman Lacy for signing on as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Would the administration like to respond?
Happy to, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from the County Exec's office is our Environmental Policy Director, uh, Mr. Johnston from Central Services, Ms. Harris and Ms. Romans, and from Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. Again, appreciate, uh, the sponsors' work on this bill. Um, this is, you know, the county executive worked hard with Mr. Johnston, doing a lot of the legwork to develop a plan that is fiscally responsible, practical, and, uh, gets us to the end goal, which I think we all share, which is a, a cleaner, um, fleet. And, and this bill, uh, takes the, the county executive's policy and puts it into the code. It's, it's a great bill, um, we fully support. And, uh, Mr. Johnston and, and our experts from Central Services are, are happy to answer any questions.
Do my colleagues have any questions at this time? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District Seven. Um, we start by saying I like the policy idea of converting to more fuel-efficient, energy-efficient, um, less polluting vehicles. I'm trying to understand how, as a practical matter, it gets implemented here. So if the plan is not due until the end of twenty twenty five, but we are to start looking to, um, purchase hybrid or electric vehicles as soon as the next budget cycle. And I understand it looks like, you know, it's provided it's financially feasible, cost-effective, practical and all those things. But how are we to do that before we know where the infrastructure could go, should go, must go? In, in other words, was there any thought to moving the plan portion of it upfront and having the procurement come follow a year later or so? I'm just, I'm struggling to make sure that we do this part-horse kind of thing.
Sure, so.
Mr. Johnston?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Thank, thank you, Councilwoman Hare. Very good question. And I think that Ms. Romans and I can, can tackle that from two different perspectives. First, I, I think that this bill builds off of a memo that the county executive wrote over the summer, which requires the immediate start to the conversion, to, to the improvement of fuel efficiency in the fleet. And I think as Ms. Romans can allude to, that start has already begun. Um, our hybrid vehicles, uh, efforts to procure hybrid vehicles right now. But there are also other efforts that don't require the entire, an entire, if you will, um, large electric, uh, charging infrastructure base. We don't have to completely replace Fuel Depot with a charging depot. Um, if all we're going to do at the start is, is select a few, um, pilot cars for purchasing over the next few years and charge them at home and provide, uh, opportunities for our employees to give us feedback. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Romans to talk a little bit more about what, um, Central Services is doing right now.
Good evening. Christine Romans, Director of Central Services. Thank you, Matt, and thank you to the sponsor of this bill. Uh, as Mr. Johnston has said, we are already working on some of these issues. Um, and a- again, we might be able to buy some hybrid vehicles, which don't require anything different in the way of infrastructure. They do require some training issues. They do require some things that we may be able to contract out for, which requires, which, which would mean we can't really do it tomorrow. Um, but the planning period is shorter than if we are planning out a electric vehicle, fully electric vehicle, which does require charging depots and infrastructure in the right parts of the county and understanding the different agency operations. So we are kind of going at this piecemeal, um, but with the idea of we want a full plan for implementation in a couple of years' time, which seems kind of far away. It will go by quickly. Um, we also have, and it'll be a request, um, that hopefully you will see, we are asking for some funds in the capital program to help us with that plan development. So we know what we know, and we are working on it internally, but we know, we don't know everything, and we don't certainly know kind of where the market might be heading, and you will see a capital budget request, hopefully, um, to help us support that. So there's a couple, there's a lot of things that are moving forward, um, and it doesn't, uh, the, the plan not being fully written first doesn't mean we won't be able to take some intermediary steps.
Thank you. Ms. Hare, I mean, not Ms. Hare, sorry. Thank you, Ms. Hare. Ms. Fiedler, you, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, um, I think this question is for Madam Auditor. We communicated, um, pretty frequently over the last few days, and I wanna go back to the cost, overall cost savings comment, because the audit information, um, that Ms. Smith would put together for me, I'm looking at, um, a chart that kind of breaks down the hybrid low range, hybrid high range, electric low range, electric high range. Um, it calculates in the savings on fuel and maintenance and, um, training costs. I'm looking at floor to ceiling, four seventy-eight, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred, all the way to possibly fourteen point nine million. So I'm trying to figure out where, where the savings would come in.
Okay, so what I put together, um, for Amanda was asking me for some kind of ranges. So I looked at the low MSRP, uh, replacement cost, and I divided it, um, by four years, seeing as we typically replace three to five years. Our police vehicles usually sooner. And, um, then added on the cast, cost savings for the fuel estimates that I had in my blue letter and the, um, and the maintenance, and, um, and that's how I did it. And then on the high range was for electric vehicles. So my study is, was based on MSRP prices at, um, low and high at the different variations. Um, I don't know if that kind of helps with you. Um, the cost savings is, tends to be in the maintenance and the fuel. Um, but they, right now, the electric and hybrids tend to cost more to purchase. So kind of offsets that. But that, I don't know if that answers your question.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just follow, I, it might be a question that Ms. Radgian can help with or Mr. Johnston as well. Um, because there was the, the comment that it would be an overall cost savings, and I'm just trying to see, when does that come into play? Is it at year fifteen? Is it at year ten? How does that play out?
Um, if I could answer this, and then, Mr. Johnston, feel free to, uh, add anything I might have neglected. So I think the difficulty with knowing exactly what that, you know, point is when we get the cost savings um, is challenging because we, you know, we can't anticipate exactly what the prices will be. So we're working with prices that we have, um, that, you know, we have currently. But obviously, um, you know, the case for most technology is as it improves, as it becomes more, um, widely demanded, uh, price comes down. So, you know, we don't know exactly when that, you know, when that tipping point was, which is why I mentioned the UBS. Um, the UBS report that, you know, predicted twenty twenty-four, um, if, if I'm not mistaken, um, was when the purchase price of the vehicles would start to, um, become lower than the purchase price for internal combustion engines. Now, some of the other savings we start to get right away. Um, fuel savings we start to get right away, and, um, maintenance costs are lower, if I'm correct. And at this point, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Johnston, if that's all right, Madam Chair, if he has anything he would like to add.
Madam Chair, pardon the interruption. Just a reminder again for council staff, council members and admin to please, uh, state their name before they, anytime they start speaking. Thank you.
Mr. Johnston?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, Matt Johnston, uh, Environmental Policy Director for the County Executive. Um, very good question, Councilwoman Fiedler, and, and I think that Madam Auditors and, uh, Vice Woman Chair, uh, or Vice Chair, uh, Radgian's comments get two things that make the financial case for this policy, um, um, a little bit more palatable. And those two things in Madam Auditor's blue letter are that, one, the cost difference is going to be spread out over time as vehicles are replaced, because fourteen hundred vehicles will not be replaced overnight. Um, and over that time period, as we get to the point where we are more comfortable purchasing electric vehicles or other zero emission vehicles, we fully expect, and Madam Auditor's letters suggest, um, what we expect, that that price, we will be closer or maybe even achieve price parity. So further down the line, whenever we're actually purchasing larger amounts of these vehicles, these financial, uh, cost estimates will be completely different. You're, you're still gonna have those savings from the fuel and the savings from maintenance, but now the price difference in, in the, the purchase price of the vehicle is now gone, say, at some point this decade. Um, but as, as the Vice Chair mentioned, um, in twenty twenty-four is one financial, uh, uh, firm's estimate. And then the third thing, sorry, I had mentioned three. The third thing, and the reason why the county executive wanted to jump on this this summer, is that there is not just Volkswagen money settlement, if you all heard about that settlement money, but there's other money out there, grants for localities that are trying to do this, and we wanted to have a policy on paper this summer um, that said this was a goal. This is a policy of Anarundel County Executive. Um, and now with this bill, we'll be even a stronger contender to go after grants. And a lot of these grants look at exactly the cost difference between internal combustion engines and whatever you're trying to purchase, so they are to offset the additional cost upfront.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Um, my question first is for Ms. Romans. Ms. Romans, is there anything in the county code that precludes central services from purchasing hybrid or electric vehicles at this point, absent this policy?
Thank you for the question. Christine Romans, Director of Central Services. No.
Okay, thank you. And if I may follow up, Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Romans, also, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, at the point that the electric vehicles with the batteries in twenty twenty-four potentially are less expensive than internal combustion, uh, energy or engine vehicles, excuse me, um, the county would be required to purchase the lower price option at that point, wouldn't they?
Christine Romans, Director of Central Services, potentially, depending on how the procurement is, um, put together, uh, we can either do it as best value or low price. Currently, we do low price for most vehicle purchases. If we are going to include things like training or maintenance-
If we are going to include things like training or maintenance activities, there might be a different procurement method that is chosen. But again, the cost information is very hard to predict right now, since we don't have our plan. We are monitoring that. We are certainly working to procure hybrids as we can to test them and understand better how they would work in our fleet, but there are still some unknowns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I have more questions.
Sir, yeah, I'll be happy to call on you again later. Ms. Picker, do you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Picker, D2. I just wanted to ask, I'm a little, I was a little confused by Madam Auditor's statement. Maybe Christine Romans can, Ms. Romans can answer. Does the county typically pay MSRP for vehicles?
No, Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. MSRP is kind of a term used in the, I guess I could call it residential or commercial fleet. We buy fleet vehicles that are direct from manufacturer that pass through a dealer, so it is a slightly different pricing model. Because we buy bulk, we pay less. I do believe that Ms. Smith was trying to put together a straw man to try to develop some cost information or range of costs, and I think MSRP probably is better, a publicly available piece of information to do that, but that is not what we would pay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I did want to say too that I really do like the policy idea behind this. So I'm just trying to put all of the pieces together. So I know from communicating and reading Madam Auditor's blue note that the largest amount of vehicles that are eligible are within the police department. Is there a priority list for departments where we would start rolling out hybrid cars? And the reason I ask is there's only one jurisdiction, I believe, that is using hybrid vehicles in their police department. So I'm wondering, first, if the chief would be included in those communications, if the output from hybrid vehicles as first responder vehicles is being considered and would fall kind of under meeting the operational needs. That was a lot of questions, I'm sorry.
I'll take them. Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. So we actually are procuring our first set of hybrid vehicles specifically for the police department, because the market has put something like that together, but you'll notice I said pilot. We're just procuring a few for exactly the issues that you noted. We need to make sure that they are going to work for our police department. Nothing is more important to any of us, from top of the county government down to the fleet mechanic, to make sure that these vehicles are ready to go and meet the mission every day. We are not going to put officer safety in jeopardy. So we are testing them with our first purchase, and we'll go from there and develop the plan. If they do work for that mission, then yes, there's an opportunity because of the large number of vehicles in the police department. Their office is their vehicle. If it doesn't work, then that's a mission choice. That's an operations choice that we will obviously have to be okay with, because we want to make sure the officers have the tool they need.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm not sure who to direct this question to in the administration, so I'll ask it, and then hopefully somebody can figure out how to answer it. I'm looking at the bill, page two, under section C, lines thirty-three to thirty-five, where it talks about the replacement of county-owned vehicles, internal combustion engines, and it indicates that Central Services shall procure hybrid or zero emission vehicles so long as the purchasing agent determines that the vehicles meet the financial, operational, and technological needs of the using agency. So what I want to understand is, if a department has X number of dollars, let's say it's the beginning of the year, and there's, you know, a full budget, then they've just started the new fiscal year, and there's a vehicle that's on the market that is an electric vehicle, let's assume, before the price has dropped. So it's much more expensive under the blue note, as that noted. And the vehicle meets the operational and the technological needs of the agency, and the department has money. Is the department required under this bill to purchase the electric vehicle as opposed to an internal combustion vehicle?
I'll take that one, if that's all right, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Verran. You're both nodding. Please. Okay, very good. Central Services Officer Christine Romans. The budgeting for replacement vehicles is all done centrally under Harris in the Fleet Administration to the Office of Central Services budget. So the decision about the type of vehicle, would replace a vehicle at the time it's ready, at the end of its life cycle, is made at kind of a more macro level. So it wouldn't be left to an individual agency and their budget to be making that decision. Part of the plan we are working to put together is to understand the agencies and their operational needs, so that we have a list to go to of groups of vehicles that the mission and the operations can support, whatever alternative type vehicle that we have, so that when it comes time to buy them, we are prepared. We've got money set aside that could pay more, or hopefully, we will find, as prices come down over the course of the next fifteen years, we will find those savings from vehicle replacement costs. But it's done at a macro level. It's not something that an individual agency would make the decision on the fly in a given year.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Romans, I appreciate that answer, I do. I guess where I'm not sort of getting it all, clicking together for me on this is, it seems like we're saying something shall happen, but then we're getting a very big out, if you will, to say, it shall happen, but there's all these ways that it cannot happen. So I guess I'm trying to understand what's really the purpose of what we're doing here. Is it a shall, and this is what we're going to do? Or is it a shall with a lot of exceptions and kickouts and different things where we can say we're not going to do it? Because what doesn't make sense to me is, if the department has money, and if you've figured out we need to replace fifty vehicles in this department, and they have this vehicle currently, but there's an equivalent electric vehicle that's, you know, one and a half times the cost, but it can meet all of the operational and technological needs, it would seem to me under this bill, that if the money is there, you would have an obligation to buy that, even though those are more expensive. Am I misunderstanding this?
Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. The bill codifies policy, so it's something that we have been directed to do, that we want to do internally. But because it's over a very long time period, we want to implement it. We want future generations of Central Services Officers to implement it. We don't know yet if the costs are going to be more. It actually might be less by the time we get there. So we're trying to balance moving forward as quickly as we can on making these changes to the way our government operates and provides vehicles to staff that need them to do their mission, while also recognizing that there may be reasons that we can't pursue an electric vehicle or an alternative technology vehicle right away, and that is technological, operational, as well as financial.
Ms. Rod?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Raviyan, District Six. I wanted to chime in here to answer Mr. Volkey's question. One way that I think about this is that shifts the default position. Rather than sort of intuitively or at first going to internal combustion engine vehicles, it shifts the default and say, okay, we're going to start by looking at hybrid electric and electric, or eventually other zero emission vehicles. If they, if we find options that need all those parameters, then that's where we're going to go. If we find, oh, wow, this isn't going to meet the operational need, or it doesn't, we don't have the right kind of vehicle for the particular use that a certain agency or part of the, you know, county government needs, then we'll say, okay, well, it doesn't meet these requirements, and then we'll go to what's not the default position. So that's kind of the way I would think of it. It's shifting the default to hybrid electric and electric vehicles.
Mr. Volkey, do you have another question before we move on to the public hearing? Or would you like to hold until after?
Whatever the chair would prefer. I'm happy to ask my question now or wait.
Okay, I'm going to move to the public hearing, so we can get our folks signed up out of the meeting, if they wish, and then we'll return to questions. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 10620. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We had one submission of written testimony on Bill 106, which was shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have one individual signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. It is your turn. Please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Tim Grooms.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. How are you all doing? Tim Grooms, Glenburnie, Maryland, 411 Willow Bend Drive. I want to say first, earlier in my life, I was a climate change knocker. I am no more. Anyway, I'm for this bill, and it is time that the county takes on human enhanced climate change, and as it says in the bill, lead by example, starting locally. Hopefully, more counties will see and join in where we can start making an actual difference in our air quality. Look, we're downwind from Baltimore, upwind from DC. We're in a densely populated area, so it may, you know, starting off small is probably not going to do much, but if the movement grows, then maybe we'll see our air quality go up. This bill should start for ensuring our county is heading in the right direction when it comes to dealing with human enhanced climate impacts. Locally, it would be nice to see a reduction in our bad ozone that is caused by many man-admitted aerosols and summer heat. Summer is the worst time for ground-level ozone in the area. This ozone can cause many health problems. Anyway, starting with ensuring future county purchases for vehicles that use clean energy is a wonderful way to start. Finally, I hope to see the council work together on bills that deal with the impacts of human enhanced climate change, while understanding that policy may have to be brought on slowly to allow for people to adapt to adjustments needed. Human enhanced climate change is a real problem, and we have to do our part locally to ensure a healthy future for us and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 10620 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 10620.
Bill Number 10620, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing, Procurement, Transportation, Transitioning the County Vehicle Fleet to Hybrid and Zero Emission Vehicles.
Mr. Volkey?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm not sure if this is a question for Madam Auditor or for Ms. Romans or somebody else, but if the county were to put out a request for proposals, an RFP, I guess, and the county were to say, we want to replace certain vehicles in our fleet with either hybrid or electric vehicles, at that point, by putting the RFP out, is internal combustion even an option that would come back and be considered as part of that RFP?
I can answer that one. Christine Romans, Office of Central Services. As part of the procurement process, no, you have to clearly define the scope at the time that the solicitation goes out on the street. If we wrote the procurement document to say, we are looking for vehicles that meet, that are either internal combustion or hybrid or hybrid electric, or whatever technology comes next, then we would be able to toggle between and make a choice based on cost or value or anything like that, but you have to write in procurement up from the beginning.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think, actually, Ms. Romans just answered my question. So do I understand correctly that the intent would be to write an RFP that allowed for any one of a variety of forms of cars for a particular, you know, it must meet this performance type of requirement? And then, when you get the bids back, you'd be evaluating based on the number of cars you needed replaced in an individual department and the money we have in the budget for that, which of those bids would fit correctly? So you wouldn't, you would be writing the procurement broadly. That's the intent behind it.
Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. I can't really comment on exactly how we would write the procurement yet, because we don't have the plan put together, and we don't know what vehicle we mix and which agencies and where we want to do it and the equipment that's needed. But that is certainly one option, that we could do the procurement that way.
Let me ask then, under the current policy, is that how, for these pilot programs you're doing, is that how it is supposed to be right now?
Currently, it's not, because the availability on the market is such that there aren't a lot of fleet vehicles that have this technology that we're looking for. The reason we're doing the hybrid police package on that, their vehicles, is because the market has one. So we wrote the procurement to be very specific, that we wanted that vehicle, and we wanted to test it. But generally, what we put a spec out for a vehicle, we are writing the general specs that we're looking for. Once we have our plan, we will know which vehicles we could potentially make into one of these alternative type vehicles, and that will become our spec, and that we will ask for that going forward.
Okay. Madam Chair, can I ask one follow-up?
Quickly, and then I'll go to your other colleagues.
Okay, thank you. I think this will be my last question. So I guess what I'm just trying to understand is, for me, to evaluate the financial, whether it fits within the financial, operational, and technological needs of the agencies, there has to be some sort of a comparison done. Do you envision that moving forward as kind of that would be the approach you think Central Services would take as well?
It's definitely potentially one of the ways we could do it, once we have a better handle on what we're trying to buy, for which vehicles. I can't commit to something that's a couple of years down the line yet.
Okay.
If I could, Madam Chair.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Just wanted to respond quickly from the administration's point of view. Again, there's this memo out there from the summer, and now there's this follow-on bill. And one of the nice things about the memo from the summer, just to let all the council know, is that it requires Central Services to publish an annual report for the County Executive, of which we would be happy to share with the county council. And that annual report will include a lot of information, including, you know, what the plan is for the following year and what the cost savings to date have been, gasoline savings, infrastructure, things like that. So the idea is that this plan is flexible as we move forward, based on the annual report.
Ms. Fiedler?
Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So Ms. Raviyan made a statement that right now this is defining policy, or it may have been Ms. Romans. So there's not a hard dollar amount attached at this time. This is just strictly to put us on a particular path, and if necessary, in the future, depending on the market and what's available, we may or may not see a large increase in the budget at some point. Did I summarize?
Mr. Verran, who would you like to respond to that statement or question?
I think you got it, but I'm going to turn to Ms. Romans or Mr. Johnson.
Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. Ms. Fiedler, you summarized it correctly.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So Ms. Romans, I hate to sort of beat the dead horse, but I keep coming back to this question, because I don't feel like I've gotten an answer to it yet. If you're at the beginning of a fiscal year, and if you've determined that these are the vehicles we want to replace, and you put out an RFP that has all three of these types, let's say, electric, hybrid, and internal combustion, just for purposes of illustration, and you say that these are the operational, these are the technological needs for that vehicle. At that point, at the beginning of the budget year, I would think you would have the financial resources. If you get vehicles back, that even if they're the most expensive option, electric, under this bill, you're obligated to take those electric vehicles over internal combustion, even if they are more expensive, because they meet the operational and technological needs, and you have the financial resources. Am I using that? That's kind of the crux of what I keep asking, because I want to understand. It seems like this is giving you license, or not even a license, the requirement, to go with whatever the either hybrid or electric option is, always regardless of cost, given that they meet the operational and technological need.
Christine Romans, Central Services Officer. So it's possible we would do an RFP where we would say, hey, we want one of these three vehicle types. Tell us what it would cost. It's also possible that we would send out a procurement that is specifically saying, we want to buy twelve electric vehicle, charging type vehicles, no internal combustion engine to be found, and procure it just that way. So today, when we spec a vehicle, and we're going to buy command vehicles for the fire department, for example, we put that specification out on the street. It is based on an IFB model, low bid wins. However, we know at the start of the year, we have a program and a plan, how many of those vehicles we want to buy? We want to buy ten, twelve, whatever. If the prices come back such that we can only buy eight, that's all we buy. Or we cancel the procurement, we go back to the fire department, and we say, you guys must have something in the vehicles that the market says is really expensive. Can we look at the specification? That's another option for us, if and when we get to implementing the purchase, the mass purchase of these kinds of vehicles that are contemplated in this bill. Does that, does that answer the question better?
Mr. Volkey?
I couldn't unmute. I apologize. Yes, Ms. Romans, thank you. That was, that was.
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Raviyan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Raviyan, District Six. I think one thing that's always important to keep in mind when we talk about any environmental policy is we can't only calculate things in terms of we can't only calculate things in terms of the dollar amount. Obviously, if this were strictly a dollar amount equation, you know, the way, you know, if we look at the, the current pricing of hybrid electric or hybrid electric versus internal combustion engine, this is not a move we would make. If we were only concerned about the financial, you know, the financials as they are stated right now. But we know that in the long run, there are savings. And we know that, that there are also benefits that come from making this change that are not necessarily quantifiable in dollar amounts. For example, you know, enough people turn away from internal combustion engines. Fewer people have to get treatment for asthma, for example. So, you know, one of the difficulties with environmental issues is that we have all these, we're, we're very accustomed to sort of externalizing those costs and having other, you know, other parties deal with those costs. Yes, we have internal combustion engines, they have their exhaust, and they have these health consequences, these cumulative health consequences for people in the county, all over the country. And so I think, you know, sometimes when you're making a policy decision, you know, obviously, cost is enormously important. And if this were totally out of our realm, I wouldn't necessarily be, I don't, I don't know that I would be advocating for this, you know, especially where we are, you know, financially in this moment. But it's not way out in left field. We're within a few years of price parity. We already know that the fuel costs are lower because you're part of your, you know, you just don't need as much fuel for a hybrid and you don't need any fuel for an electric vehicle. We know that the maintenance costs are lower already. So I think that it's important when we're doing the sort of math to make sure that we're not only talking about the numbers. We're not only talking about dollars and cents, but we're talking about the policy achievements that we can reach by, you know, that benefit everyone in the county by making a move like this. That, you know, there are real benefits for improved air quality. Our grandchildren may have, our grandchildren, great grandchildren may have less to worry about when it comes to sea level rise, which is, you know, becoming an increasingly challenging issue in my district, but I know in other districts as well. So I think, you know, sometimes it's very difficult. We want concrete, we want things in black and white. But it isn't always in black and white. And I think we have to accept that there is some importance in what we can achieve that may not be perfectly quantifiable in dollars and cents at this moment. So I would just urge my colleagues to support this legislation, even if you're not 100% confident about, you know, how this is going to play out financially. We don't know. I mean, that's, I, I think that's one of the reasons that, that Mr. Johnston, when he was working on the executive order, left this flexibility in there to say, look, if, you know, for example, Ms. Romans were to go back to the fire department and they say, actually, we really do need 10 vehicles, we can't settle for eight. Then I think that this legislation gives them the flexibility to say, actually, it's not financially feasible to do what we need, want operationally and technologically. So that flexibility is there. And we leave it to the discretion of the people who know best. But we also get an annual report. We also manage, ultimately manage the budget. And though we still have, we still have our say in the process as well. So I, with that, I encourage my colleagues to support this.
Mr. Volkey, not sure if your flag up.
Thank you.
Is up with a current question or was just left there by default?
No, it's there for a question. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I appreciate all of those comments that Councilwoman Roddian made. And I, I think that all of us share those concerns. The, the question that I guess I want to ask is just from a practical standpoint, whether this bill passes or not, under the county executive's current executive order, what's going to change? You know, whether this bill passes or not, it, it seems like the county executive has already, by way of executive order, directed that the county, when going to look at replacing vehicles in the fleet, look at electric, hybrid, zero emission options already. So what, what does this do that the county executive's current order does, does not?
Madam Chair, Lisa Roddian, could I respond to that question?
Go ahead.
It really just extends it beyond the life of our current county executive, or our current executive's term, I should say. You know, which, you know, we don't know exactly how long that will, will be. But if we have another county, a different county executive, this policy would still be in place. And that's really what the, that's what this bill does. It takes something that's currently a policy and says, we want to make sure that we follow this policy going into the future. So that it, you know, basically extends it to the future.
Mr. Volkey, do you have another question?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. So I, I don't know, Ms. Roddian, if you want to answer this, you can, or someone else would prefer, that's fine by me as well, but I appreciate that. It seems to me the answer to the question then is, whether this bill passes or not, at least for the next two years, there's no practical change. We're going to see the same thing because the county executive is there. And assuming he's reelected, then it would be for another four years on top of that. But effectively, we're not going to see any change whether this bill passes or not. That's, that's what I'm hearing, but I don't want to mischaracterize.
Mr. Johnson, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I would say, you're absolutely right, Mr. Volkey, that the bill is extremely similar to the memo released by the county executive in the summer. I think one difference is, again, if you have codified language in our county code, as opposed to just one administration halfway through their administration writing a memo, that hopefully will mean more to the grant agencies as we go out for grants, that this is codified in our county code.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison Pickard, D2. And I was just going to respond. And Mr. Johnson sort of said exactly what I was going to say, but I'll just add, this allows this council and this body at this time in 2021 to say, these are our values, and our values are now codified. And we want to move forward into the future with an environmentally friendly policy regarding our fleet. That's what it does. That's what every time we codify anything does. It puts it in the code. Thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A lot of the comments, obviously, are already repeated by the time that I get up. But I want to mention something. I make this as an analogy to when the four-year bond bill came up, when I served in a prior administration. I ended up voting against that bill, but you want to know what? It was a policy decision, and the council needs to decide here whether you recognize that we need to make changes in our procurement. I thank the sponsors, obviously, for bringing this up. Of course, there's always open, unended things. But ultimately, do you support the fact that Nantucket County, as a local government, for procurement, do we want to put a plan forward that obviously changes the status quo? And that's a decision that folks need to make, and I think it's pretty clear. Thank you.
I'm going to take a second here. Sarah Lacy, D1. I believe I'm the only one of us who owns an electric car. It's 100% electric. Okay, well, not, I mean, on the council, Mr. Johnson, okay? But I can tell you a lot about the experience of owning an electric car beyond just, wow, that's different. And everyone sort of asking, well, how come the car is so quiet, you know, yet we're moving? And different things like that, because it's a different experience. But I think for this body, it's helpful to know, for one, it's the cheapest car you can own. From, it's not just a low fuel cost. You know, I have solar panels on my roof and I plug in at home, so I get energy from the sun and I stick it in my car. But the maintenance, all I have to do pretty much is rotate the tires, change the windshield wiper blades and the interior cabin air filter. That's it. And if I eventually hit too many potholes on 295 or something like that, then, you know, okay, I need a wheel alignment. But the maintenance issues that that car needs over, you know, say, eight years, which is the warranted battery life of the vehicle, they, you know, with an internal combustion engine car, traditional car, your maintenance costs go up, not just because the total accumulates, like you're getting five, 10, 20 oil changes over the life of the vehicle. It's because it needs more expensive maintenance actually done to it. And in that sense, an electric car, from what I've seen, at least the kind I have, I mean, it'd be true of all kinds, but it's far more reliable. So there's less downtime. I never have to take my car to the shop. It's the easiest thing in the world in that sense. It's 100% reliable. And that means a lot. I think that means a lot in terms of money that can be calculated. But also in terms of, you know, peace of mind and dependability. I mean, I'm not worried that some random thing is going wrong on my car and I can't drive it so long. Which brings me to my third point. My car is the best mobile office I could possibly have. I can sit anywhere in my district, I'm having lunch, or I go from, you know, one neighborhood to another, whatever. It can be a blazing hot 100-degree day. I can sit there and have my car air conditioning on full blast. I'm totally comfortable, and I'm not emitting any, you know, carbon dioxide or sulfur particles or anything. You can be next to my car and not experience that, that just like nasty feeling of hot burning exhaust that comes, comes around from every other kind of normal vehicle. Same thing in the winter. It gets really darn hot. It can get electric heat hot that you just, you want to just turn it off and say, never mind. I've got all the heat I need. Thank you very much. All on that burning fuel. And I can't tell you how many hours in the past several years I have actually been like, I can't do work in my house. I'm going to go get in my car and drive somewhere, or even just stay in my driveway, but turn it on, sit on the passenger side, open up my laptop, my electric car is going. And it's the most convenient thing ever. To me, the example that we set as a, as a county body, a county legislative body, through our adoption of this policy, which I can add that my kids think is super cool, get in the car and they're like, what is this graphic that says there's a battery? What's going on with plugging in your car or when it's using energy? All of that is about us setting a great example for the future, beginning right now. So I didn't even do any of the work on this bill. I just jumped right on it as a co-sponsor because I own this car and I know what it's like to drive one. I know we can do this. I know the infrastructure is not that hard. And I think that's the piece about the grants that's really persuasive is for whatever infrastructure we may need to add, that infrastructure would be in form of charging stations, which we can get grants for, and they can be distributed throughout the county. We may be able to subsidize certain costs related to charging stations that I just think will, at that point, it won't be the obstacle of the big unknown. We're going to be able to find ways because the manufacturers and environmental groups want municipalities and counties to transform their fleets over to electric and to hybrids. So that's my soapbox. Okay. I think, Mr. Volkey, did you have another question? Put down your flag. Otherwise, I'll relinquish. Okay, does anyone else have any other comment? Okay. Then, Ms. Roddian.
Yeah, I'll be super, super quick. I really just want to take a moment to thank Ms. Romans for, oh, Lisa Roddian, D6. I wanted to take a moment to thank Ms. Romans for her clear explanations. I obviously, my thanks continues for Mr. Johnston, but I didn't thank Ms. Romans earlier. And she obviously is very knowledgeable on the subject, and I think has provided a lot of helpful answers to the questions that have come up. So thank you so much, Ms. Romans.
Thank you. Okay, last call for any further discussion. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm just going to make a comment about this. You know, my vote on this is going to be construed differently than how it's intended. But I appreciate the policy. I appreciate Councilwoman Roddian and yourself, Madam Chair, have put together in this bill. And I do think that it's an admirable policy for the county. I, I don't, I don't understand the reason for doing this right now, other than kind of as Councilwoman Roddian said, to ensure that this lives beyond the current county executive. And I think that, again, even assuming that he's only in office for another two years, very shortly, just as Councilwoman Roddian noted, the cost of lithium batteries is hopefully going to be much lower so that electric vehicles are a far more cost-efficient option for the county to replace our fleet. And at that point, I know that Central Services is going to do everything they can to maximize county tax dollars and purchase those vehicles. So I see that sort of alignment of costs and, and sort of availability line up pretty quickly. But so for me, you know, I, I know that how I vote on this, you know, people are going to say certain things about what I believe about climate or not. But I do support this idea, do support that the county executive is looking to try to be more efficient with our fleet. But I just can't support this idea at this point in time because I, I think it's redundant, and I think it's largely moot to what the county executive has already done.
Anyone else? My colleagues? Seeing no flags. Oh, Ms. Pickard, your flag flashed across the screen.
I know. Had to get in the last word here. Allison Pickard, D2. So I will be supporting this tonight. I, I think this will ensure that the hard work that our administration is going to be doing will live on beyond any of us currently seated tonight. So with that, I'll just go to the vote.
Okay, no more flags. Hearing no Madam Chairs. Madam Secretary, please call the rule on bill number 10620.
Ms. Roddian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Sixth in the affirmative, one in the negative, bill number 10620 is passed.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Hearing none. Ma'am, motion to adjourn.
Council approves the motion to adjourn.
And the second?
Pickard, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The council is adjourned until 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Thank you, everyone.